All right. Can I have your attention? We are now reconvened in open session. First off, we will start with our review items. First being the review of the minutes from the previous meetings. Do we have any questions, Mrs. James?
I don't have any questions, but I'd just say that I did look at them and I had some minor changes that I wanted to make to the called meeting and agenda review from October 8th, from the regular board meeting October 15th, and from the regular board meeting November 12th. So, Dr. Dupree, at some point next couple of days, maybe we can get together and I can show you those.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mrs. James. We appreciate your hard work. Next item is going to be 5B3. Review proposed... No. A2, excuse me, review the proposed order of election to be conducted May 4th, 2019. Any questions or comments? Moving on to 5B3. Review the proposed 2019-20 district calendar and related staff development waiver. Mrs. James?
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. So, I had a question about this that I sent in and I might have been a little bit misinterpreted based on the answer. So, if you look at the calendar, can we put the calendar up there? Stop. Alright, so on that calendar, spring, the end, stop, okay. Third nine weeks ends on March 20th. An alternative calendar moved spring break to the following week, 16th through the 20th, which would then allow the third nine weeks to end before spring break on March 13th. That was the question I was trying to ask. Was that option considered to end spring break? Because for the students and the staff, to end the nine weeks before the break seemed reasonable. Sometimes, students get assigned projects over spring break, which makes for a lesser spring break-ish experience.
Thank you, Mrs. James.
Thank you for that question. We did look at that option and we can certainly go back and look at that again if the board would like for us to modify that timetable. The reason that it is the way it is, is it equitably distributes the third nine weeks at 46 days and the fourth nine weeks at 46 days. When we got your question today, I did reach back out to our academic affairs folks and they are very comfortable with either option. So, we could put forward and have approved the earlier date or that date if the board sees fit to allow for the lesser projects over spring break.
So, how would making this change, the change I suggest, change the number of instructional days in the nine weeks? It seems that they're the same. You're just moving the holiday.
We would end March 6th, which would reduce the nine-
Alice, I think her question is would we move spring break?
We would. We have not considered moving spring break, but we could end the grading period on March 6th instead of March 20th to allow for that end to occur before spring break.
Okay, so there was no consideration given to having spring break at a different time?
We did look at possibly doing the week of March 16th because some of the other districts are doing March 16th, but we elected based on the community feedback as well as our needs as an organization to leave it at that March 9th date. But we could end the six-week March 6th if we need to. Right, the neighboring districts, Katie ISD, Lamar Consolidated, and Stafford, are all aligning with our March 9th week of spring break.
They've already approved their calendars?
Katie has approved their calendar. As of the last time that I spoke with Lamar Consolidated, they were looking at March 9th. I don't know that they've approved theirs just yet. And Stafford was in the process of approving theirs.
Okay, and also in the note, you said that HCC is having a different, has the second, that March 16th is their spring break?
Correct.
And we have a lot of students in dual credit and maybe some programming changes that... So, how does that impact those students?
We have approximately 300 to 400 students who are in dual credit that could be impacted by the change. I communicated today with the vice president over HCC and she and I agreed that we would work to make sure that there's no difficulty for students with the break being different at this time. Another consideration as we looked at our March 9th week was, in addition to the surrounding districts going that week, we also have our Houston Livestock Rodeo that ends on the 17th of March. So, if we had the week of March 16th off, there would be impacts potentially for staffing with substitute teachers, et cetera, choosing to go to the rodeo the week of the 9th, leaving our, making it difficult for us to have substitute teachers and also attendance impact if students chose to go that week.
Yeah. I was on that committee and I know we also talked about some of our students that participate in the rodeo as well and what the impacts would be to them as well.
Right.
Thank you. Mrs. Tolson, did you have a comment?
Yeah, so that was gonna be my question, is that I know we have a lot of students that participate and having that spring break week off allows them to do that. So, that was gonna be my question about when the rodeo was gonna end this time. I also had a question. I saw that this year, so this year graduation is happening Memorial Day weekend and we're getting out a week earlier than we normally do. This calendar, I think, proposes that we go back to, I mean, we're not gonna go into June. So, what, tell me what the comparison is between this calendar and what we've had in the past? Because I know Memorial Day weekend, where the kids are gonna come back to school those few days and have exams. That's a big deal in our house. So, and I know it's a big deal in a lot of people's, you know, homes when their kids have to have that three-day weekend and then have to go back and take exams. So, did we look at ending and not coming back after Memorial Day? Did it not work with this calendar? What was considerations for that?
When we initially built the calendar, it was built because of our testing calendar as well with TEA. And so, with that ending at the time on May 22nd, it forced us into having our exams the following week, which is just those few days after the Memorial Day weekend. The advantage to this, though, does allow us to have some additional holidays throughout the year. And Ms. Heliger was on our committee and that was quite a large voice of the committee members and the community, that both the students and the staff need breaks throughout the year. And so, by continuing to have it for those couple of days beyond Memorial Day, that affords a break, a true holiday break for both staff and students each month throughout the year.
Okay, so I know that the testing calendar changed, correct? So, now we're not, TEA is not ending on May 22nd, but May 15th?
Correct.
So, we gained a week. So, just tell me, if we were to consider ending now on the 22nd instead of the 29th, how would that impact those holidays that are throughout the year? Or would it?
It very much would. Those holidays, the three that we gained by having the three days after the Memorial Day weekend would no longer be possible throughout the course of the year. And another thing that makes it complex for us to do that is that our graduation would then potentially be, we wouldn't have that Friday off to have a graduation on that Friday and to prepare for graduation. So, another big consideration by the community was, and the committee, was that by doing it this way, we end on a Thursday, leaving that Friday not a workday for staff and not a student day. And so, we would, if we were to go back to ending on the 22nd, we would lose that Friday off around graduation as well.
Because that's what we're doing this year. We lose the Friday off this year.
Well, we have the, we have that Friday, the 29th off that would include-
I'm talking about this year.
Right, and that is making it quite difficult as well, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Addie, for serving on that committee, by the way. Next, 5C1. Review the proposed addition of a pathways and technology early college high school at Hightower High School for the 2019-20 school year.
President Burdine, Dr. Dupree, members of the board. Last month, you received information regarding the early college high school and the PTEC programs that we are gonna be seeking approval for next Monday. Currently, there are a little over 1,000 school districts in the state of Texas and there are, in those school districts, 198 early college high schools and 34 PTECs. We shared some information regarding what administration has done to engage members of the different communities. In this case, we're talking about Willer Ridge, Hightower, and of course, Marshall. We described what some of the benefits were. Some of the benefits, students attending these, that would attend these schools or these programs are obviously the potential to earn up to 60 college hours, the potential to earn an associate's degree, and of course, the amount of money that would be saved since this is, would be a free to the students that would be in attendance. What we have today is, there is an opportunity. We have been receiving a lot of questions from, not only from members of the board, but also from the community. We have tried our best to respond to those questions. Today, we're here to respond to any other questions that you may still have. There are members of administration that are prepared to address any questions or concerns that you may have. So, at this moment in time, we will address those questions.
Mr. Rice, go ahead.
I just had one question, Dr. Rodriguez, and that is if having the early college high schools programs at these three different schools, will sports and fine arts, will the students still have an opportunity to participate in sports? And the fine arts program, so those aren't being cut at all?
Yes, sir. You are correct, Mr. Rice. They would still have those opportunities to participate. There's no plan to cut fine arts or athletics.
And am I correct in understanding that students that participate in this may graduate from high school, not only with a high school graduation, but an associate's degree?
Yes, sir. There's potential to graduate with the high school diploma and of course, there's potential to have that associate's degree, up to 60 college hours.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mrs. Heliger?
And this is really for all the 1, 2, and 3. So, is there an application process for these programs? Is like, is there, can anyone that's zoned to those schools attend? Attend and is there, if I'm not at Marshall High School and, you know, from an equitable standpoint, if I'm not at Marshall High School or Hightower or Willer Ridge, if I want to send my kid to this program, can I do that?
Yeah, so I'm gonna use Marshall High School as the example. With their proposed early college high school, at this point, what we're proposing is that 70% of the seats be for Marshall High School students. So, if you have a cohort of 100 students, 70 students, we would be seeking 70 students from Marshall High School with the other 30 coming from the other 10 high schools.
So, then how, how does this impact our boundary lines then? So, I mean, because if other kids can come to the schools, kind of like in a sense, to me, I kinda look at it like an academy in a sort. Is that not the right way for me to look at it?
We're looking at it as a program. And to answer your question, if you're looking at 30 students per cohort coming from 10, potentially 10 other high schools, I can't say that there's gonna be a dramatic impact because you would have to get those 30 slots and they would obviously be divided by potentially 10 other high schools.
Okay, okay. So, one of the questions that I've also received around this is that the potential that the community was not as involved with deciding these things or had input into us putting these programs at these schools. Can you talk to me a little bit about the community involvement that we had to get here today?
Is there a particular feeder pattern that you're interested in or just in general?
The one that I've been getting a lot from is really Marshall High School. So, let's start with Marshall High School.
Okay, so with Marshall High School, we acknowledged that the level of engagement was not there and we acknowledged that last month. And what I will tell you is, there is a proposal that we've made and I, as of a few minutes ago, I had discussions where I'm gonna continue engaging with members of the Marshall community that feel that they were either ignored or not heard. I think there's potential to generate additional ideas that could potentially impact Marshall in a positive way in addition to the early college high school that we're proposing.
So, the programs are there just from a straight academic offering? It's offering standpoint of increasing any of the educational, the academics at those schools? Is that why we're offering these at this schools? These programs at this school? Why not at Ridge Point or Bush or something? I just wanna understand the process around how we got here.
Well, I think one of the things that we considered specifically when we were looking at these three high schools is when we look at the student profile for these particular programs, the profile for the students is specifically for students who are underrepresented in higher education. So, our intent was primarily to provide some of our underserved students in that arena better opportunity to prepare them and provide them with the opportunity, as we said before, to earn 60 college credit hours at a cost savings in some cases of up to $40,000 for their families.
Okay. Can, can these programs work in conjunction with academies at the same school?
Yes, ma'am, they can. And in a situation with, as we're looking at Hightower High School with the PTEC option, that would be an extension of the academy. The academy would be in and of itself, but with the PTEC offerings, we provide an alternative track for students with industry certification and the ability for them to, if they would like to seek higher education opportunity beyond their associate's degree, that's an opportunity for them. Or they can go directly into the workforce with industry certification as soon as they graduate from high school.
Okay, so good. So, that means that when we talk about, in another conversation down the road, when we talk about the other programs, the PTEC would not be an impact to those discussions? Okay, alright. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heliger. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, thank you. So, when would the, the application process be open? So, as soon as this is approved, we're looking at next fall, right? So, when do you think that the application would be open for these schools? And when would it cut off? And where I'm going with this is, if you're gonna set 70, you know, 70 slots open for home campuses and you don't fill those, you're gonna wanna know that so that you can open up more spaces to, you know, other campus, other students from other campuses.
Yes, and we're looking to begin the application process next month. So, that's the plan that we have currently in place in February.
Okay. And then, so as far as the PTEC ideas, at Hightower, last time you talked about like x-ray technicians or something like that, are there any other ideas or that you already have for that?
I'm gonna have Dr. Pettifield go ahead and come up and explain what some of those ideas are.
So, yes, sir. So, with Hightower, we had a steering committee in place because the purpose of the steering committee is to determine pathways in the health sciences. So, the steering committee helped determine medical information technology and histology is the two pathways that they were most interested in pursuing.
Okay, so that's what we'll be looking to, looking to put in place?
Yes, sir.
And how do you think we'll be able to find teachers to teach some of those things? Or do we already have them? Or you think that's gonna be, those are gonna be difficult to find?
Yes, sir. So, we had a collaborative meeting with HCC to begin the planning and a lot of those courses are in the junior, a little bit in the sophomore, but in the junior and senior years. So, our partnership with HCC will allow us to build in those courses and work collaboratively with HCC to pull their faculty.
Okay, so these would be like third and fourth year type classes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the other thing that I'm just a little confused in, in the memo, it says something about completing work-based training within six years. Can you explain what, you know, where do you come in with the six? It's not a question.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Ms. Rodriguez to address that.
Okay.
Good evening. So, the six years comes from a model that, where we are supporting students even beyond that four years to earn the certifications that they need to be successful in that particular pathway. So, part of this process is to support students in tracking them in their progress. And so, if they, if we need to support them with moving into that post-secondary education to continue to finish off their coursework or to earn additional certifications or complete the certifications they've begun, then that's part of our charge with this program.
So, how, what does that look like in a practical sense? I'm not really following you.
So, a lot of what the, at college advising is, is customizing for what students need, right? Beginning, when they are accepted to the program, through graduation. And so, what, what we would do as a, as a school district is support them in that, whatever that transition may be, to if they continue on with our higher ed partner or if they transfer over to another partner, we support them through that transition to ensure that they have a core sequence and they have an intended ending date that may go beyond the four years. And so, that, that comes into play with the college advising that takes place and the transition, sort of the handoff that takes place between the ISD and the higher ed partner.
So, I guess I would think that that would happen at kind of a graduation time and then that, that other college would, would take over. So...
Can I ask a clarifying question if that might help? As I understand what you're saying, you're saying that by the time they leave us, they would have an associate's degree? If they didn't start that associate, they're basically saving all of that 60 hours that they would have to do after high school? And if they did not finish that degree at that point, they would have to do more hours at post-high school? This allows them to go ahead and in only two more years after high school finish their full program? Does that sum it up correctly?
Right, correct. That gives them that additional two years to complete that.
So, really, we're building the scaffolding in their four years in our system so that when they leave us, it's, that's why it's such an investment and cost savings for them because then they only have to spend two years in post-secondary after they leave us.
Right. That, that I get, okay. But, but we're not necessarily, they're not gonna be necessarily involved with corporate ISD like on a day-to-day basis. Okay, that's where I'm, that's where I was confused. Okay, okay. That makes a little more sense now. Okay. And so, I just wanna make one comment because, you know, I've read a lot of the emails about community input and whatnot and who was consulted and who wasn't. And, you know, I, I just kept thinking that whole time is, you know, really, the conversation should really be about, at this level, you know, here in this room, is what's best for kids. And, and so, so rather than worrying about, you know, well, this person, you know, spoke up but they were from Willer Ridge, I don't see where that matters. So, it's really what's best for kids. So, personally, and I've spoke to a very good friend of mine who is now an administrator, former professor at HCC, and she told me that when she sees these kids walk across the stage with an associate degree, that it brings tears to her eyes. And I think we're, we're doing a great favor for kids. I don't care what school it is, if we can help them focus and get that much farther than they would that rather than, you know, instead of just a normal high school graduation. So, you know, you've, I've asked questions last time. I think you've answered most of those. And my concern is that, again, you're gonna, we're gonna be able to fund the teachers and whatnot that can do this and we need to make sure it's supported. And so, we give these kids a good shot at this. So, that's, that's really what it comes down to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Tolson?
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. So, I really, I really am excited about all three of the programs because I think it offers, I think it offers kids additional opportunities. So, I'm, I was very excited when we started talking about these things for kids. I did wanna clarify because I, through some questions that we've, we asked over the past few weeks, I myself got some clarification on the difference between the PTEC and the early college high school. And so, I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding that you guys had to actually apply to TEA for permission to start early college high schools at specific campuses. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So, the early college high school has to be tied to a particular campus that qualifies under a mandated TEA, sort of a universal model or specifications that are set out that are beyond our control?
Well, we, we applied to the Texas Education Agency for three early college high schools and they granted us acceptance for a planning year. And that is what we're doing now, is we've engaged in the planning for those early-
Okay, but that wasn't my question. My question was that you guys applied to TEA specifically on behalf of three high schools and it was granted because their TEA is who sets out the guidelines for early college high school? Okay, because that's what I wanted to, to get clear on because it's my understanding that we don't have a lot of control over, over those guidelines and over who can be granted an early college high school or permission to plan for an early college high school. Is that correct?
So, just so I can get some clarity on the question, are you asking if this could have been, if any other high school could be considered as well?
No. So, here's what you guys wrote to me. "PTEC at Hightower and Willer Ridge required decision-making from different stakeholders to decide the appropriate pathways because the PTEC had to determine the pathway. Early college high school did not. Early college high school is a program driven by a universal template from TEA." That's what I'm asking. Because that's what you told us. Okay. So, I'm just trying to get some clarity around that because I don't think that all of the community has a lot of clarity around that. Because there were steering committees for some high schools and not steering committees for others. So, I just-
Please hold your applause.
I just wanna get some clarity around why that was. Because the PTEC had to specifically determine their pathway. And the early college high school was basically dictated or governed by a universal template from TEA. Correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So, I, and so I just wanted to make that clarification because I think that's where a lot of the confusion is about why some things were handled one way at some schools and some things were handled other ways at other schools. So, I, I don't think, I don't believe that that in any way lessens what a student is getting. I think students can apply, and I ask these questions. Can students apply to the PTECs at Willer Ridge and Hightower? And can students apply to the early college high school? And you, you guys have answered that question because I wanna make sure that if we have kids at Marshall who are interested in the PTECs, that they can take advantage of that and vice versa. and vice versa. From an engagement perspective, I was, I, I asked that, this question, and you guys answered, who was on the focus groups, because it was a little bit different than a steering committee, and you had a lot of, I think Missouri City Middle School had a focus group, and I was very glad to see that, 'cause those are the kids that are gonna be matriculating up. But I'm also glad to hear that there's gonna be a steering committee going forward at Marshall High School, because I, I do think it's important to get the feedback of the leadership and the parents and others who are, who are currently there. We've got some kids there, especially in the ninth and tenth grade, that might be able to take advantage of this, and so I think we need to get the feedback from them, and I'm glad to hear that you guys are gonna do that. To my earlier point about pro- a programming plan, I'm also glad to hear that we're gonna have a committee that's gonna have input, I think you said this, Dr. Rodriguez, input on what might be a good fit from a programming perspective for Marshall High School going forward. I would like to hear, I've heard some of those ideas, and I would, I would like to hear more about it, and I really think it's important that, you know, the community have some say in that. And I'd like to stress, and other board members can weigh in if they want, but I think we learned this when we went to extreme governance this past week, that engaging the community and partnering with the community is two different things. So, engagement is great, but it's the first step. So, I think I just wanna make sure that we're partnering in the future, eh, to make sure that we, we truly are taking those ideas and feedback into consideration when we're, when we're implementing programs, and when we're creating the plan that I know we're gonna create for programming for high schools in the future. I think that's important. So, I, I think that's all I had at this time. I, I am really excited that we're gonna have these offerings for students, but I also think there's more work to be done. I, I think that there's, you know, this is not gonna a- address utilization or enrollment, and those were some of the, those were some of the goals we had, in addition to expanding the opportunities for our kids. So, as I consider these things, that's what I'm gonna be looking for going forward, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Tall San. Mrs. James?
Thank you, Mr. Berdine. So, thank you, Mrs. Tall San, for your questions, and, and also, Mr. Rosenthal, and thank you for that bit of clarity. So, I think that what, the point you made about the process and what's involved in the different models was a good point, and it's not one that I'm fully clear on yet, but, but I think that, that, that explains some of the confusion that I'm experiencing and everybody's experiencing. So, I have two clarifying questions. One is about the students enrolled in the program, we're expecting, or we're hoping for a hundred students, seventy from the home campus, thirty from another place, but still having the same qualifications, if you will. And then, are those, and those students, as Mr. Rice asked, gonna be fully students at that high school, participating in fine arts, participating in athletics, and is that, are they also going to be part then of the, the ranking system at that school, and, and they're like, they're fully enrolled in that school, just like our academy programs are handled now?
Yeah, so the students at the early college high school, they will be a part of the conference of high school when it comes to GPA and, and rankings.
Okay, okay, that's great, thank you for that clarification. That might be another policy we wanna take a look at, as a sidebar. Then my second thing is about Marshall High School in particular, on that item there in the third paragraph down, it talks about multidisciplinary studies, and I tried to ask a question about that, because I don't really know what multidisciplinary studies is. It sounded as if the purpose was for earning an associate's degree for students particularly to go on to a four-year degree. But when they finish that two-year degree, do they, what are their marketable skills that they'll have, what will they be able to do, will they have any industry certifications or anything like that?
For the early college high school, there's not a specific industry certification. Again, they graduate with an associate's degree with sixty college credit hours that are transferable, transferable, I'm sorry, to a four-year institution, state-supported Texas institution. Some, some college credits may transfer to private institutions, and out-of-state, perhaps not all sixty for private schools and, and out-of-state, but for state-supported Texas institutions, they are able to transfer those hours and directly to a four-year institution.
Okay, and is that subject matter set by TEA, or is that something we have discretion over? 'Cause in one of the notes that I looked at today, it said that we had some choice, and then another place, and maybe from what Mrs. Tall San was saying, we don't have a choice. So, I'm not, I'm not clear if we have a choice or not.
When it comes to early college high school, there's just, going back to what Ms. Tall San said, there's a universal template, so there's not, but I wanna reiterate the fact that, you know, there are gonna be continued conversations with members of the Marshall community. I think they have, for the past year, they have been bringing up ideas to members of administration, and there has been nothing done with those ideas, and I think it's important that we engage with those members of the Marshall community, and that we acknowledge that there is information that can better impact Marshall High School and the students that are there, so. So, that is at the level of engagement that we, that's our next step. I mean, this is, you know, for administration, this is a phase one. This is a phase one, in our opinion, of something that can benefit families in the Marshall community, benefit students in the Marshall community. Phase two is gonna be to really engage with members of the Marshall community, and to listen, and to see what ideas they have, and to see what staffing changes we would need to make to implement some of their ideas.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, that's a great answer.
Mrs. Halliger.
Thank you, I just wanted to follow up, I think, on a question or statement that you said, Ms. Tall San, around the fact that the kids would come out with a, maybe it wasn't you, but kids would come out with a associate's degree in any of these programs, that's the goal, right? Now, the question I have is that with these sixty hours or the, the six years that we have to do this program, I am a little concerned, and hopefully we get some clarif- clarification around it, is, is one thing to have an associate's degree, but the reason why, and this goes back to my first question, is how do we pick these three schools? And I think based on the, the criteria that's set forth by TEA, those, those schools qualify. That's why we're not, we didn't offer up other schools to have this, these programs, am I correct? So, with that said, thinking about that, an associate degree is one thing, but I think we need to look at this something a little more hands-on, that kids could come out and, and earn a living, but not, so those pathways need to be, you know, something that they can go back, you know, ha- have some skills, and with, with those associate's degree. So, I, I just wanna make sure I, I just kinda emphasize that. 'Cause even my own child, I, I know we've talked about this in the past, even with our career in technical colleges, that, and, and I do like the fact that you get the opportunity to bridge after that first two years, is because our kids will start off, they might not finish, they're still trying to figure out what they, what they're, what they wanna do, and that, that allows them to still kinda work on the work if they didn't complete it during the first four years. And I know what's important for me is that, how we support our kids after graduation, and I know we have the community colleges, but sometimes even that can be a little cumbersome for our students, and so that partnership, to me, is really, really good, and we need to emphasize with the community college is the pathways to do skill-type work. 'Cause I, 'cause what I'm hearing is that, based on some other areas or schools that have done this, the programs just aren't, you know, programs that those kids, especially our students in those particular schools, would even wanna do. And so, I'm challenged with that, as well as, is this just with the partnership with Houston Community College? Is this, is this a partnership with U of H, or, or any of those other schools, our local schools? Is, is it just with Houston Community College?
We're also have, in conversations with U of H downtown as well.
Okay, U of H downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay, well, I look forward to hearing some of the, the further work that you all have, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Halliger. I'm, to piggyback off of something you had said, I'd be interested to see how we're gonna piggyback with the Tech Ed Center, and what that looks like, and, and how we can plug into that. I assume that's gonna be something that's gonna be down the road, once we know what that looks like. Am I, am I correct on that?
Actually, in our planning, we're, we're working very closely with Meredith Wattisek, who is, you know, doing all of the planning for our CTE Center, and especially in, in considering the pathways for PTEC, we engaged industry partners as well, so that we could get information about the market and what pathways would serve our community in the best way.
Thank you for that. Mrs. Tall San, you have a quick comment?
So, I have one last request. I wanna make sure that the counselors at Marshall in particular, but Marshall and Willeridge and Hightower, are very engaged with these students to help them plan the best pathway for themselves. And I say that because a lot of our kids don't even realize the opportunities that we're already offering, and now we're offering three additional opportunities, and so the two PTECs will offer the certification, the early college high school offers an associate's degree for maybe a student who can't afford four years of college after the fact, but might could manage the two years, so, you know, I like that we have that option, but our CTE Center is gonna offer a lot of certification opportunities as well for these students who are gonna, you know, maybe need to work right after high school, or work until they can go to college, so I wanna make sure that our students know about all of this, because in my experience with two kids in high school right now, they don't. So, and I sit on the board, and I know, but a lot of the kids don't know, they're not getting that kind of input and planning. So, I don't think these things are gonna be, help our kids be successful if we don't help them plan for what might be the best pathway for them. So, I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Mrs. Tall San. So, we started off with agenda item five C one, and we basically combined about three of them here. I'm sorry, Mr. Rice, excuse me, go ahead. Are you sure? So, we started off with five C one, let's go down these real quick. The next one, five C two, review the proposed addition of early college high school at Thoroughgood Marshall for the nineteen-twenty school year. Next is five C three, review the proposed addition of a pathways and technology, early college high school PTECs at Willeridge High School for the nineteen-twenty school year. All right, moving along. Five C four, review the proposed international travel by the Stephen F. Austin High School senior, junior ROTC cadets to travel to Cozumel, Mexico.
I have a comment.
Mrs. James?
There's a typo in this item, it talks about deporting these students, and instead I think we want them to depart. It's in the, it's in the first sentence of the summary.
All right, moving along here. Next, five D one, review the proposed order authorizing, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Rice, did you have a comment about that, our question? Oh, knock on the next one. Yes, sir. Five D one, review the proposed order authorizing the issuance of Fort Bend ISD unlimited tax, school building, and refunding bonds. Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Berdine, and Mr. Basset, and Mr. Viasenior, and really, my questions are about the D one through five, and I know we're refunding some bonds, we're issuing variable rate bonds, and we're converting some bonds to a new tax rate period, and then our commercial paper program. So, of our bond indebtedness, before, prior to us passing the bond, it seems like we're, we're around eighty, eighty million dol- uh, no, eight hundred million dollars, is that right?
Oh, closer to nine hundred and sixty.
Nine sixty? Have we sold any bonds for, from the new bond yet?
We have not.
Okay.
We've issued commercial paper.
Okay.
But we have not.
And the commercial paper, is that good for, how many days is that, two seventy?
The most you can have it for maturity is two hundred and seventy days.
Okay.
But we have not any, issued any commercial paper for bond twenty eighteen yet, that'll be part of this authorization to expand commercial paper, will also be to include bond twenty eighteen financing.
And, and, and of our variable rate percentage of the total was, I'm trying to recall if that was twenty percent?
Last I saw was about seventeen, sixteen, seventeen, yeah.
And, but is the threshold twenty or twenty?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, so we're well within that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Viasenior, for being here.
Yes, and, yeah, our bond counsel is also here, and, yeah.
And Mr. Frails.
Thank you, Mr. Frails. I didn't see you back there.
Mrs. James?
So, I, I need to back up a little bit, so, we, this is kind of a whole new strat, a whole new way of going about this in terms of, are we, I, I guess, exactly what are we, I, I don't wanna start at the very beginning, but can you give me a?
No, that's okay, I'll try to be quick. The only new strategy is changing the commercial paper authorization from one hundred to one fifty, okay? So, that's, that's new.
Okay.
The, the first two agenda items are to allow us to refund commercial paper, refund the two thousand and nine bonds, and then also add some new money, if, if appropriate, whenever we price in April, but we don't see the total transaction being higher than three hundred million. A hundred and fifty for the two thousand and nine bonds, and then a hundred and fifty potentially for the, for the new money and commercial paper refunding. That'll be the only twenty nineteen transaction, besides the refunding of the commercial, not commercial paper, those other two variable rate series that are gonna come due in July. We wanna combine those and, and go through the remarketing of those, so there's two agenda items that support that, okay? But we, but we're asking for the same flexibility that we've had in other times where it's a combination of fix or variable, it really is the same strategy.
Okay, so you're, so it's the same concept, you're just coming back to us, you're coming back basically for a year's worth of this is what we think might happen, and increasing the commercial paper amount to a hundred and fifty million over a hundred million, and then providing yourself flexibility to get the best finance rates.
Exactly.
I see Mr. Viasenior, he's back there nodding. I cannot see you, Mr. Frails, 'cause there's a podium to him.
I do, I do see us coming back in the fall, though, for additional transaction. I mean, once we refund all this commercial paper, then depending on how things go and the spending, you know, we could, we could have another transaction as soon as fall of twenty nineteen, but that'll be another agenda item that we'll bring at that time.
Okay, thank you. I completely misunderstood. I think it, what threw me off was the table at the very beginning, so, thank you.
Mr. Berdine, I had one, one more question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Basset, u- under this program, I know we've saved a considerable amount of money over the last several years, can you refresh my memory as to how much that is?
I think our commercial paper savings have been in the excess of seven million.
Seven million dollars, and that's in the last-
In interest expense.
Three years, I think.
Uh, yeah, two and a half or so.
Two and a half years, that, that's great. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Mr. Viasenior. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Moving on to five D two, review the proposed order authorizing the issuance of Fort Bend ISD variable rate unlimited tax refunding bonds, which may be issued in one or more series. All right. Next, five D three, review the proposed order authorizing the conversion of Fort Bend ISD variable rate unlimited tax school building bonds, series two thousand and fifteen A and series two thousand and fifteen B. variable rate unlimited tax school building bonds, Series 2015A and Series 2015B to a new rate period. All right. Next, we have 5D4, review the proposed order authorizing the issuance of Fort Bend ISD variable rate unlimited tax refunding bonds. Next, 5D5, review the proposed amended and restated order authorizing and establishing of the Fort Bend ISD unlimited tax commercial paper program. 5D6, review the proposed resolution to authorize superintendent to submit the application for a federal grant to fund replacement of technology infrastructure used for uniform crime reporting. 5D7, review proposed phase one professional services firms to provide both bond 2018 services and non-bond services. Mr. Basset, just really brief, what is, what do we mean by the non-bond services? What does that fall into? I'm sorry, Mr. Frills.
Yes, sir. These, both bond 2018 and non-bond, we utilize these same consultants whenever we have projects that are just out of design and construction. So when we went out for the RFP, we went ahead and made sure that we were approving these for both. And so we're, we're asking for authorization to be able to utilize them as needed and non-bond up to five million.
Thank you, sir. 5D8, review proposed lease of warehouse space at the Sugar Land Business Park.
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Dr. Dupree, can you remind me of what we're using the, the old HCC campus out there on?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oscar, would you like to address that, please?
Yes, sir. Right now, the way that we've been utilizing that building is we've been having quite a few departments utilize the space for meetings and all. With the passage of Bond 2018, we're going to be looking at headquarters for our police department and then also the extended learning. That's the first phase of it. And then in the second phase of the bond, we're gonna be building out the remainder of that.
Okay, so that it's not available for storage. We need this leased space?
Correct.
Warehouse, I mean. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Next, 5D9, review the proposed purchases exceeding fifty thousand for the Oracle PeopleSoft Annual Support Contract. Next, 5D9B, Certica Solutions Incorporated. Mrs. James?
Yes, I'm, I'm a little bit confused. At the end of this item, it's talking about two five-year renewal options. Those, I don't, I'm not sure what, I don't understand what we're approving exactly.
So we wanna, initially, the RFP, we wanted to have fifteen years of the, the contract. However, the vendor will only allow us five years term. So we're gonna bring, ask you to approve five years and then we're gonna come back for the next five and then the next five. Because they don't want for us to lock in. They don't want us, allowed us to lock in a price for fifteen years. We suspect that it can continue to increase because of maintenance and things like that. What we're trying to do is try to fix it to where it's fifteen years, but they won't allow us to do that. They only allow us to do five years.
Okay, and so you're saying that, so, but this, that's where I'm confused. So I understand a five-year contract. But then the next part says two five-year renewals, which is the fifteen you're getting to.
Yes, sir.
So the con-, the contract includes that? Or it includes it, but you'll still be coming back to us with the contract and we'll have an option to?
I'll let Mitzi answer that because she knows the detail of the arrangement.
That's where I'm confused, because it says through twenty twenty-four, which makes sense in terms of the first five years.
Mrs. James, we have some, we have some community members and I can't hear what we're saying here. I'll wait till they're done. Go ahead.
So we did the, the fifteen-year procurement to save us time from, you know, continued RFPs and evaluations and things. What is in the contract is it's, it's a five-year contract. It's one five-year contract. At, as we near the end of that five-year contract, we're gonna come back to the board for another five-year renewal and then at the end of those five, come back for one more final renewal.
Okay, so the, so the last sentence in this item where it says the contract includes two five-year renewals, that's, that's not accurate or that's referring to something else?
Well, the, the procurement, the procurement that we did was for fifteen years, but the contract does say it's a five-year renewal with two five-year renewals after that, but those are pending, those would be pending board approval.
And we would try to renegotiate with the best, best pricing every time.
I think perhaps more importantly, the contract is a five-year contract, as she mentioned. The contract expressly addresses the ability to have two more renewals of that same term. But we're gonna have to negotiate the pricing for both of those terms, which is why we'll come back to the board.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Next are our audience items. Per board policy, we have allotted fifteen minutes. Due to the amount of submissions, we are going to give everyone a minute and a half to speak. There are a few different agenda items on here. If people would like to combine them, you're more than welcome to. First up is Kunjan Dedia and Ankar Shah. Would you all like to combine those or would you like to do them individually? Are you still here? Kunjan Dedia and Ankar Shah. Yeah, well, let, let me find out who's here and then we can, we can adjust accordingly. Obviously, they're, they're not there. Is Regina Gardner and Monica Riley here? All right. Tammy Moreno still here? Stephanie Brown? Mr. Jerry Monroe? Michaela Ruggs? Jeff Peterson? Uh, Mr. Jones? Mrs. Jones? Lafayette Howell? All right. Let's do, let's do two minutes apiece. First off is Mrs. Tammy Moreno. We'll give you a thirty-second, Mr. Rosenthal will let you know when you have thirty seconds.
Hello, can you hear me? Yes, okay. Hi, everyone. So integrity is doing the right thing when no one is watching. The two biggest survey response groups were Elkins and Quail Valley at about twenty-two hundred of the thirty-six hundred received. Marshall was admittedly near the bottom of the list of campuses ranked by number of surveys. So maybe Marshall wasn't watching as closely as we should have been, not nearly as closely as Quail Valley, who was earmarked for rezoning to Marshall in three of four presented options. Did Fort Bend do the right thing when no one from Marshall is watching or the path of least resistance thing? Where's the integrity? We're watching you now. Per Dr. Dupree earlier this evening, it's critical to bring in programming and enrollment to Willow Ridge. But for Marshall, just programming. And programming selected by the district. The community engagement came after Early College was chosen for Marshall while no one was watching. Maybe Marshall would have been better served by P-Tech. I guess we'll never know. We weren't invited-